Okay. Mr. Rowley?
Mayor, the next item is the Item B in the public hearing items. It's RZ 1306, East Roxboro Road and Wright Avenue. And we have the community development director for presentation.
Thank you. Susan?
Thank you, Mayor. This is RZ 1306. The applicant is Artisan Home Crafters LLC in care of Roberts and Dranhail PC. The request is to rezone 2.16 acres in land lots 1107, excuse me, and property address 1107, 1111, and 1115 Wright Avenue, 1977 and 1987 East Roxboro Road, from RNCD to R60 to build two new single-family detached homes.
You said two.
Did I do that again?
Yes, you did.
To build 10 new, single-family detached homes. We stipulate to the staff report. We have supported this request and note that the property to the north is owned RA8 and contains 3.7 dwelling units per acre. The property to the east is owned RNCD and contains single-family detached homes at 4.9 dwelling units per acre. To the south, there are single-family attached residential, zoned RNCD at 4.9 dwelling units per acre. And to the west, R85 with a density of 2.1 units per acre. The comprehensive plan calls for suburban character in this area that allows for eight dwelling units per acre. And we find that the one-family detached residential use plan for this area is entirely consistent with the policy intent of the plan, as the plan forecasts residential uses in this region of the city and makes accommodations for homes to be built at no greater density than eight per acre. In regard to economic use, it appears that the current zoning on the subject property allows for economic use. It appears that the 2008 conditional site plan has constrained the development potential of the site. The proposal is to build single-family detached infill housing, which is exactly the same land use pattern that surrounds the project on all sides. It does not appear that the zoning proposal will adversely affect use or usability of nearby properties. And the actual area is an area identified in the county land use plan as an area requiring special attention, rapid development land use change, which provides support to the requested change. There are no such known historic building sites, districts, or archaeological resources identified or known by the South to be on or near this property. In regard to the burden on streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools, East Roxboro Road is a well-traveled thoroughfare through this part of the city. The applicant has proposed that the homes fronting East Roxboro take access from a shared driveway off of Wright Avenue. And Daniel, if you can put the site plan up. The more minor of the two intersecting streets thereby eliminating the vehicular interaction between those homes and the busier street frontage. Even so, the Brookhaven Public Works Director has requested conditions of approval, which would be commensurate with those new homes being constructed. Most notably, sidewalks should be constructed along East Roxboro to tie into the sidewalk directly across Wright Avenue to the north. And also, streetlights should be established along Wright Avenue, as well as replacement curb and shoulder clearing for traffic visibility and pedestrian refuge. The Brookhaven Police Department has indicated that this should have no impact on current police service, which would not require any additional personnel. And the City of Brookhaven indicates no concerns in the ability to provide services in that regard as a result of this requested zoning. The staff has recommended approval of this request and notes that in our last gathering, there was some concern over the requested right-of-way. And since that point in time, we have received a revised plan, which is on the screen. Is that the...
Yes.
That's the latest plan? Yes. And we, as late as today, have some revised conditions, which are in your package. This particular site plan does indicate the dedication of the 50 feet of right-of-way from the center line of the roadway. And the seven conditions included in the package include reference to this particular site plan dated September 17th and requires the developer to restore the six-inch face along the roadway at both East Roxboro and Wright Road. And that condition number three requires us that the shoulder along Wright Avenue be cleared of all trees and shrubs for a distance of five feet from the back of the curb to allow for appropriate site distance and pedestrian refuge. Condition number four has been revised since we last met, and that is the condition requiring payment into the sidewalk assessment fund. In our last meeting, we talked about $40 per linear foot. This has been revised to reflect $23 per linear foot. Condition number five requires the dedication of sufficient right-of-way along East Roxboro Road. Condition number six requires execution of a streetlight district petition. And condition number seven requires the dedication of a permanent seven-foot sidewalk easement and a temporary construction easement along the total property frontage along Wright Avenue to allow for sidewalk construction. And that particular easement should be represented on the preliminary plat, land service plans, and recorded final plat. The planning commission did recommend approval of this request. The staff has recommended approval, and we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Do I have any questions for Susan?
You know, I have a lot of concerns that we're already... I'm sorry. I have a lot of concerns that we... that this zoning would require... I'm trying to find my list. ...of at least four or five variances to become a conforming lot.
Yes, ma'am.
I really don't like approving a zoning that is a non-conforming zoning. I mean, I think there's... I think when we can, we need to always... especially since this is a rezoning. We know that we inherited a lot of lots throughout DeKalb County that were platted and then a zoning layer was added on top of that. And so they're not all nice and neat and conforming. But this... what we're rezoning now, and the applicant, I believe, is asking for an R60, but none of these lots are 60. Is that correct?
Some of them would be, as far as lot size, but I think you're referring to other things in that they are all not conforming. And you're correct. This plat is representative of an underlying zoning that has been... lot layout and configuration that's been in existence for some time.
But I think when we were sort of counting before, the variances, and then Condition One acknowledges that they probably have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to get variance for the front yard frontage.
Yes, ma'am.
The setback, the square footage, and the rear yard. That's a lot of variances, you know, for 10 different plans. I guess I just wish that they had come in actually adhering to the R60.
Have you seen any site plan from the applicant showing a zoning-conformant layout?
No, sir.
I'm curious. Doesn't our code require a non-conforming lot to be brought into conformance if there's sufficient land to do so?
There is some merger language in our code in that regard. What we were looking at and dealing with was this underlying situation where these lots... I think the applicant's goal was to preserve the lots that were already legally non-conforming. And so we were responding to the application before us.
Assuming that we can do a R60-conformant, or R50, or whatever that R is, is there economic value in a site plan that shows, for instance, one less lot, if that's what it takes to comply with the zoning?
In my opinion, that would provide for economic use.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Anybody here to speak in favor of this application?
I'm the applicant. Can I say a few words?
Yes. Hello.
I feel like we've...
Name and...
I'm sorry. Shay Roberts. I'm the attorney for Artisan Home Crafters. And I feel like we're kind of coming at this... When we first met with planning staff, we all kind of came up with a strategy together, and it was to try and preserve the original lots that were never changed on the tax plat map because this rezoning... previous rezoning never actually came to fruition. And so we followed the instructions of what staff... what we all came up with. And unfortunately, the DeKalb zoning ordinance, it makes no sense. And I've been talking to Susan about, hopefully, there's going to be some changes. There is no 50-foot-wide lot in DeKalb County. So even if we put R50 on there, it still requires 60 feet of width. So our understanding from staff as of last week was that because these were original lots of record, we're only going to have to get variances on the corner side yard setback of the lot at the corner of Wright and Roxboro, because these were legal non-conforming uses that unfortunately were rezoned and these property owners are now trapped. And we've done everything we can to preserve those Mackey lots as the original plat. That's what we've been working under this entire time. And now this is, you know, the first we're hearing of, no, let's not do it that way. And there's not enough land to where one lot is going to make a difference with the way these lots are configured. He's already given up one lot, an entire lot, that was a legal lot of record, according to the current tax plat maps, to put that private driveway so that there were no curb cuts on East Roxboro. He's also giving 50 feet of right-of-way to the county. We went back and we reworked the plans. I mean, we have been working this...
The city.
I'm sorry, the city. So sorry, so sorry. Gosh, no. This is a much better place to be. You know, we've been bent over backwards to respond to every request that's been made. I've never had an application with Pine Heights, where Pine Heights has been on my side. The neighborhood's in favor of this. I... You know, it's unfortunate that the ordinances are that you inherited are not great. And I know y'all are working hard to get them to where they need to be. But these property owners have been sitting with nobody closing these properties the way they thought they were going to, and they're just continuing to dilapidate. And all they're asking for... They're giving up a lot. They're just asking to go back the way it was. The whole neighborhood in the area is in favor of it. They're not asking for anything more, and they're actually giving up a lot. And the city's not going to have to pay for that right-of-way. He's putting in curb... I mean, all these things that frankly, legally, I don't... and constitutionally, I don't know that he has to do. But he has wanted to do because he wants a good relationship with the city. And so I guess I'm just concerned to hear concern at this late hour, when we feel like we've talked to staff, we've heard your concerns. We didn't want to give up the 50 feet because it really changed the configuration of what he had to do. And so I don't think there's as many variances, according to staff, as they think, you know, that's being expressed tonight. So I would really ask that you approve this because I feel like everybody thinks this is the right thing to do with this property. And I feel like my client's given up a lot to make this happen. And so we would ask for your support tonight. I will save any time for rebuttal, but I hope there isn't any because I'm not aware of any opposition.
All right. Anybody here to speak in favor of this application?
I have no comment cards, Mayor.
Okay. Anybody here to speak in opposition to this application?
I have no comment cards, Mayor.
Okay. Does he want to speak anymore?
I don't have a question.
Nothing? All right. Public comment section is closed. On zero?
I wanted to ask Susan a follow-up question. So Susan, I just want to be clear on... So from the beginning, the direction from the city has been to go back to these original non-conforming lots?
I believe that that's correct. I believe that initial conversations that were had with the property owner and the attorney and other members of staff, and then later on, being myself, we've been working towards moving forward with this property, recognizing that they were asking to remove the conditions of zoning that are on the property, which this is the method by which to do that. And so the applicant's approach was to preserve the integrity of the underlying recorded lots that were already there.
I have a question to that point also. So looking at the existing conditions, and I see you've got what looks like maybe two structures on the property.
Are you looking at that site plan?
No, I'm looking at the existing building plan. It's page 128 in the packet. I'm just... And I don't know that you really need to... No, it's... That's not the existing... Now, if you have a packet... I don't even know that you really need to see the picture. But basically, my question is, so you've got a rezoning process occurred with DeKalb County. They've rezoned all of these. And did they subdivide the parcels? Because it seems that...
Those parcels in that configuration...
Well, not that configuration. Looking at the...
128.
Maybe get page to 128, so we're on the same page.
What's existing? Just the four homes on an existing?
Yeah. One, two... Yeah, it looks like four homes.
This particular drawing that you're looking at for on page 128... One, two, three, four, five.
Looks like it's five lots, but four homes.
Well, if you look closely, you can see... You see 13, 14, 15, 16, 17.
Yes.
And then you see 12, and then you see 11, 10.
Right.
This is how... This and that is how this exists on the tax records.
Yeah.
These are legally non-conforming lots.
But the darker lines in this show five lots. I'm just trying to figure out, how do we get in this position? You know, from a conforming, what looked like, you know, five houses and conforming lots.
I think that...
All of a sudden became this dotted, you know, parcel map of...
I can only tell you that it's a practice used by the county with lots that are... I've seen it quite often in the tax records where there's two lots, but then they... the county had recognized two lots as one. I'm finding it quite prevalent in the tax county... in the county tax records.
When two or three of the original lots have been owned by a single owner for a period of time, that they will combine that into one tax parcel, so that they're not having to send out three individual bills. There still are three lots under there, but you've got one owner that owns three lots that has built a house across them. So it's common... Not common, but I mean, you see it throughout. And if you look at the tax class, you'll see the dark tax parcel, and then you'll see the underlying individual parcels that were, you know, from the original zoning... or, excuse me, the original plat back in the '30s, '40s, '50s.
But this one's even weirder than that, in that you've got the original plat, which the two bigger parcels split Lot 15 in half.
And again, oftentimes, you had families that may have owned, you know, a number of lots, and they built two houses, and they came down. So it's, you know, it's... You're looking at history, and unfortunately, history sometimes isn't clear as to how we got there, but the dad's behind.
Well, it seems that the division into 15, or was it 115, 17, seems to be much more recent history. I mean, that's where...
This existing condition survey that you're looking at has the same lines on it that this particular proposed plan has.
Right. So at some point, in what appears to me to be the recent history, all of this got subdivided into much smaller...
This has been this way for years and years and years. And when this went through the rezoning some time ago for the... What was it called? Deborah Commons? Is that what it was called? This configuration existed at that time.
Well, the reason I'm bringing up is just that I think that, you know, when you... This is a hot... It's a mess. A mess of non-conforming lots that, you know, I'd have some issues, you know, with continuing to have a mess of non-conforming lots when you have an opportunity to make it, you know, make conforming lots. You know, and that's where I... You know, if I could understand the backstory a little bit better, maybe that's, you know... Maybe there's an explanation.
I think we close the public hearing, but maybe we can reopen it if there was time left for the...
Mayor, Council, you could... If there are... Somebody who represents the developer or...
Just a citizen, it doesn't matter.
I think it's a...
Okay. All right.
And same property owner.
Or a citizen, either one.
Potential property owner.
So you would... You have the opportunity to ask them questions. They couldn't make statements to you, but you had the opportunity...
Mr. Developer, could you come forward, and we can ask you to clear what Bates is asking up?
How we got to this point?
How did we get here?
From the...
I can show you up here as well. I'm very knowledgeable about the property.
Pick up the microphone, please.
My name is Brian Gordon. I'm the owner of Artisan Home Crafters, the developer and a landowner. To answer Mr. Madison's question, basically, lots seven and eight that are on the original existing plat that you're looking at is lots 11 and 11 and 1115 Wright Avenue. I purchased those approximately seven years ago, when they were zoned, I believe, R85. And we actually just went to DeKalb County GIS and said, "We need two addresses because there are lots of original record." They issued us both of those addresses, and we actually permitted both of those lots in 2006 for both of those. So that's...
With that same RNCD?
No, that was before the RNCD. We had full intent of moving forward with the property and returning all of these lots of record at the time. Then we were approached by another developer who was assembling the entire area supposedly, and that's when they went through the RNCD zoning.
So you agreed to the RNCD zoning as a property owner?
I did at the time, not realizing that we were all locked into it.
The R60, have you done any site plans that show an R60-conformant?
We have not. And one of the main reasons would be is, like I said, lots 11 and 11 and 1115, I own 1111, and 1115 is owned by someone else at already a 50-foot-wide lot.
But you're rezoning the entire 2-point-something acres, and our code requires non-conforming lots to be brought into conformance. Are you aware of that?
Yes.
And so how are you bringing your non-conforming lots into conformance with this site plan?
Well, again, to my attorney's comments and Susan's comments, is when we originally met with the city, the idea was that we were basically taking existing lots of record, they had never been combined, that they were still existing lots of record according to the platted map. And then that's what we were going under the assumption with, and essentially trying to get out from under the RNCD, which requires that the entire parcel be developed substantially accordance to how that was approved.
How many homes do you plan to build?
At this point, 10. We are looking and talking to other of the neighbors and looking to do those as well. Our goal would be to either ourselves or someone create some type of artery in the middle of the properties to alleviate the problematics with homes that are facing Roxboro or Norwood Hills and have that rear access.
So this property to the south of your town?
Correct. And this original plat, the J.E. Mackey plat, is consistent with all of these lots here, and then it actually goes across Wright Avenue to three more lots and then four more lots on Norwood Hills. And ideally, if there was... If R50 actually meant 50-foot of frontage, there would have been a specific zoning that that could have been under. But our goal was, we were quite surprised when we went in for permitting, we were under the assumption that the RNCD was condition zoning, not zoning with conditions. So we were moving forward as the market was starting to come back and realized that we were in that situation where we couldn't build single-family homes under the current RNCD zoning without purchasing the entire property and developing it to the conditions of that plat.
Do you understand you'll need a whole... Because your plan is not... is non-conforming, that you'll need a whole slew of variances before you'll be able to pull a building permit? You've got front yard setback problems, you've got side yard setback problems, you've got rear yard setback problems, you've got garages within a rear yard. You understand that all those need to be approved by the zoning vote of appeal before any permits can be issued?
Yes. We were... We've had the conversations with the planning department that the main variances that would be required would be the side yard setback along Wright Avenue, where as a proposed seven and a half, and then the rear yard setback for the lot at the bottom, Lot 17. And since we were deeding that 50-foot right-of-way, that's creating our hardship. So basically, we would have... do hardship for all of the lots based on...
Looking at zoning code, the front yard setback off a major thoroughfare, which East Roxboro is, is 45 feet. What is your front yard setback that you're proposing?
We've moved all of the homes back to... They would be at 40 from there, so essentially, we would be about 17, plus the five-to-six-foot wide sidewalk and the two-plus-foot wide beauty strip. So approximately about 25.
So you're less than 45 feet from the right-of-way to the building line?
Correct.
And on lots 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, you're showing buildings and houses within the rear yard?
The garages are allowed as a detached garage to be into the rear setback. The variance that we would request would be for Lot 17 as an attached garage.
So you're saying that you're understanding that structures are allowed within a rear yard?
In a rear yard setback, a detached structure, yes. A detached garage.
That's true. I just... Again, I have a real fundamental problem with a site plan that has acreage of this size that is not being developed as a compliant site plan. I'm just disappointed that at some point, that plan wasn't presented, or that plan wasn't prepared to show what sort of lot yield was available with this acreage.
You would basically have about six lots left over if they were R60, 60-foot of frontage.
I think it's actually nine, but we'll...
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to do private drive because you... We were giving up that lot in order to do that.
You could do it on one of the lots and still have nine lots. No further questions?
If you saw... If you had an ability to do a nine-house development in conforming method, would you entertain that?
With nine? Well, I guess we're going from 11 already to 10. You know, from marketability standpoint, plus the benefit of having the rear access, I don't know that we would be able to get to nine. I think that the highest we would yield would be eight to meet all of the standards of the R60 zoning.
Any more questions? Any questions for Ms. Shay Roberts? Anybody have any more questions for her? All right. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion on the floor?
I may be denied zoning RZ 13-06, Artisan Home Crafters LLC. Request rezoning 2.16 acres located 1107, 1111, 1115 Wright Avenue, 1977, 1987, East Roxboro, Atlanta, from RNCD to R60.
Atlanta, from RNCD to R-60.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, motion dies. Is there another motion on the floor?
So I take it we've heard no interest from the applicant to defer it or try to redraw it to make it conforming? Is that what I understand?
I think a deferral would be better than a... I don't know. I was...
I don't know that we have that kind of time under our contracts at this point. I mean, we've been working on this for months, had three deferrals already, thought we were working towards the right-of-way, gave you the right-of-way, and now it's...
I understand.
I mean, we're going to lose contracts at this point, so I need to ask them...
Were y'all at the work session today?
No, I didn't know we needed to be at the work session.
Didn't know if you were or not, because some of this was discussed then. I know that's a late notice. I know you stated that you were working with staff, and this is all new to you, and I apologize for that.
Well, and I even spoke to Mr. Gebbia before the last meeting, and the big issue was the right-of-way. And so we went back, and all those setback variances are because he's giving the city free right-of-way. So, I mean, I feel like we've bent over backwards and we've responded to everything, but this is one that you're asking us to go back to the drawing board, and we've got contracts pending, so I need to defer with him whether he wants.
You want to take a five-minute recess? Okay, we got... we'll finish that one up right when we get back, and then we'll go to the next item, and then we'll be done. We recess for five minutes. All right, we're back in. All right, is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to take some more heat, make a move, make a motion. I'd like to move that we approve the RZ... RZ-06. 1306.
All right. Okay, is there trying to put something else on the motion?
Do we have... I need to ask that. Do we have stuff... subject to the conditions?
We have seven conditions. They're the last page of your packet.
Do you have to read one in the record, or you just note that the conditions that are in the packet?
The conditions, revised date 9/24/13, conditions 1 through 7.
Okay.
Subject to... all right, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve RZ-1113. 1306. Subject to the conditions in the packet of the date... is it the 9/24?
9/7.
Yeah, 9/24/13. The seven conditions listed for RZ-13-06 provides 9/24/13.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just, again, I caution that we are approaching a slippery slope. We're approving a site plan that has... we're laying it at the feet of our Artisan Zoning Appeals, the requirements for a number of variances, and I think that that's going to be problematic going forward. I really wish we would have seen a R-60, R-50 compliant site plan. I think that there's certainly plenty of room and plenty of economic value to have developed one, and I just... I think that this is going to be an issue going forward as we see more and more of these rezonings of non-conforming lots in the city of Brookhaven.
Thank you, Jim.
And I would just add, I would hope that this is a catalyst for the development of the rest of that whole parcel. Ideally, I would have liked to have seen the whole development of that entire corner as a complete development. I know that was a plan at one point. I hope this is a good builder, a good developer, maybe he can work in that direction. But I would just... I would agree with Jim that we really want to see plans that are conforming with our zoning. Granted, we are as anxious to tweak and even rewrite some of the zoning code. I've said earlier, I wish we could take a six-month, nine-month moratorium and get some of these things sorted out a little bit more. But on the other hand, we don't want to stop development. We're thrilled that the recession is turning and that we've got good developers who want to bring some really good products to the area, and I think it's going to be a great benefit to this area. But we would prefer to have zoning that's conforming to our code.
Yeah, I echo those sentiments. That is the... that's the biggest problem in this rezoning is the fact that, you know, we don't want to make this a common occurrence where we're... we've got a chance to set conforming lots correctly, and it doesn't occur. But I also have seen a lengthy process for this applicant. This is a very difficult site plan that has numerous rezonings, difficult lot sizes. So it's a tough one, but I think that the developers, at the end of the day, have done a fairly good job of trying to accommodate the city and come up with a good solution.
All right. All in favor of adopting the motion as stated by Councilman Madison, so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Oppose.
Motion is passed. Daniel, please enter the record. We'll break for three minutes again to give people a chance to exit, and we'll come back in one second.